Okay. And then, are there allotments? Is there different pricing? I just recently learned that there may be different pricing.
There's tiers for waters.
There are tiers for overages.
Eight thousand gallons per month is the base. In the allot. Then when you go over that, it goes through tiers as anything over from eight thousand to ten thousand gallons is billed at two dollars per thousand.
But not everybody's allowed the same amount?
Everybody's allowed eight thousand.
Okay.
Oh, alright.
It's Storm Haven.
Alright.
Because that's because of our well size and the tank size. We're kind of limited to what we have up there. When we took on the system as a town, we took on all the problems that came with it.
Okay.
And so, that's the limiting factor. Our well can only produce so many gallons per minute. And we actually upgraded the pump on that lot. That was part of that fifty thousand, wasn't it? Upgraded that, running the new lines, putting in a new generator and pump, so when the hour goes out, we still have water.
Right.
So all that came to that fifty thousand. And so we did the most that we could with that grant money.
Is there a moratorium for water in our neighborhood?
Currently, yes, there is.
So, current lots that are empty could not build, is that correct?
You can build, but you're gonna have to look at some other water options. You can't hook it into the system because it's maxed out, just like the sewer system. They're all maxed right now.
And for a lot, you know, my understanding is that well that was originally put in was for a house. And now we've got twenty-five houses on that. So that's just kind of...
We can tell by the water pressure.
No, there's almost sixty.
Sorry.
There's almost sixty. Cause you go all the way down to Tammy Lane, too. Crazy Acres.
On the well that was run, nobody is that well.
So, we're starting that on the very beginning, we just really thought, well, the last thing we want is a crash to happen up there, and it takes days and days and so, and months. And so, that's why you can enter a little more often, that's why we've been thinking about it. But we just, we just wanna be in front of it if we can.
But one thing that I wanted to add to that was also taking the system in from Suzie. As a municipality, we have options to get those grants and to get the loan interest loans. As a private entity, we can't get them.
Yeah, you and the guy.
If you and I could lock the system as a, as a community, yeah, we'd be coming out of our own lots.
So it sounds like, from what I've heard so far, is that these eighteen lots are gonna be responsible for this bill for the sewer? Instead of the whole community?
Yes.
Well, there's only eighteen out of the community that uses it, so...
Well, yeah, but that, that can be said about a lot of it, that they will play in the community.
But we're not paying for their bond on their water tank and their system.
And that was all set in place before this option even came up to more, sort of thing?
Yeah. That's why the systems were separate, they came on at different times, and the town just felt that that was, you know... When they did their tank and their bond, that was totally separate, we weren't included in that. And now our system's starting to go down and we're trying to put in some money to keep it going. Or if you got any other ideas?
You realize that the town of Daniel has no sewer system?
No.
Everybody's on septic tank. That's, that's part of the reason why we try to keep it a five acre lots. Is so that we don't contaminate that aquifer. But there is no sewer system, and if it, if it was to be a sewer system in Daniel, I think he's resonant.
I've, I've kind of run those numbers, it's a scary number.
Is it like, how many million? Just roughly, is it thirty million, twenty million?
I had the cost per house at about fifteen thousand. Um, not, and that was, that was just the front, that was just the front lines and the main road. That wasn't getting to all those houses hooked up. I think you could double that number by the time you actually got hooked up. To a lot of those homes that are way back off the road.
Before that, uh, new water system was put in, there was a moratorium on hooking up the water. Municipal water, and the only way you're gonna get it was to have a well done.
Yeah, as a big city goes, you look at their sources, they have one treatment plant that's pumping the water throughout their whole town. That's why they have one bill, one municipality. Whereas we have little, little water companies now, coming into one city. And that's what the split up is. Cause these guys down below don't wanna take on our issues, but we don't wanna take on their issues. And they're like, well, how do we deal with this? And it's like, whoever's getting service from that area, the special service district is gonna cover that. I mean, it's kind of the hard truth.
That's a pretty big bill for eighteen homes to handle.
I agree.
Exactly.
I agree.
I think that was part of the reason for asking everyone to come tonight. This wasn't good news, but it's good to understand.
I personally feel that we should take care of the two issues that we've got, two areas. Keep applying for these grants, keep applying for whenever loans we can possibly get that have no interest. And let's take care of them slowly. Let's just take it in phases, and then we actually, we actually have to monitor that septic tank. We have to know that, or how many guys even knew that we were on a septic system? Did you know when you moved in?
Yeah, but I did know there was issues with it.
So a lot of, a lot of people are still using bleach, a lot of people are still using, um, putting grease down the drains. We're not even supposed to have garbage disposals.
No.
But I know, I think most of the houses do. And all that stuff goes right into the septic system, which is causing these backups. So unless you knew about that, then who would I know?
So I hope, at least it's educational. And I would add to that, that I think the rates need to continue to go up. I don't know that we need to double them annually, or, or do something that aggressive. Aggressive is what this plays out to have a full replacement if we don't have to replace it. I would agree with addressing the issues that we know about. I mean, there, there's two areas that we can't even get the camera through. That, that strikes me as something that needs to be fixed right away. So I would, I would suggest we raise the rates, fix the issues that we know about, and then probably increase education on what can go down and not go down the drain. Because I think the people that are on the system can do a lot for a long, what's left of it. Um, so that we don't, the three twelve, use the three twelve because that's what we calculated out today as. I think that's coming. I think whether it's coming next year, or in five years, or in ten years, there's parts that need to be done right now, but I think the big one could be held off with, you know, people taking care of the system and trying to be more responsible and help, help it go further, so that we could not raise rates as fast, and maybe apply for grants. Cause one, one nice thing about politics is it will change. So, you know, a few years, a few years ago, it was really, you know, it was favorable for grants. The day will come when it will be again, it's just not today. Uh, and so, things like the garbage disposals and grease and bleach, I know there's a number of people I've seen that use, uh, the cleanouts at their house to dump their RVs when they get home. That's another great way to overload the system and cause a lot of damage. Uh, not only to the collection network, but to the, to the drain field. The surge that causes is, is a bad thing to do. And so, if we can limit those things, I don't know how the town can do that, but, other than through education. But I think that may prolong what we have, to where we may be able to qualify for a grant.
Do you guys have any ideas, Don?
Yeah. Ryan, just, just curious, what, what are the folks that are between Storm Haven and Twin Creeks? What kind of systems do they have? And could they be combined with us?
So Tammy Lane and Crazy Acres are currently on individual drain fields, because the lots are larger.
Okay.
So at the time those were permitted, one acre and above could have its own drain field. And so they're magically one point zero 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 acres.
And, and the new construction that's, that's taking place there in Daniels?
Are also... So those larger lots you're talking about that are developing are, are individual lot, are individual fields? So I, I did talk with the county, and, and one of his recommendations is he would love all of those one, two acre lots and developments, basically that whole canyon. Uh, he would like us to spend that one point five million dollars on the line down the canyon and have everybody in there required to connect. That, that's the county's idea, so. So the town, fortunately, the, the town's taken over, not the county. But that was the county's recommendation, is put in a sewer and require all the homes in the area to connect.
Has any kind of a study been done on what the cost would be if that cost was distributed, you know, throughout the...
So there's roughly, so the water system has fifty-four connections? Fifty, is that fifty-six? Fifty-four? So you could take one point five million dollars, divide by fifty-four, would be a rough calculation. Plus, most of those homes will then need to install some sort of lateral across their property to connect to that in the highway. So, I'm just, I have my phone. Most of them would be uphill, so most of them would have to be pumped for, for those two. Unless we ran the line down along the creek, and then we'd have to get easements settled to that. Then we'd have to get easements from every property owner along the creek, which I think would be more troublesome than...
Right.
Than putting it by.
So... Just, just looking down the road, it just seems like if that's gonna be done eventually, you know, it, it, they're oughta be real close.
Yeah. Well, and so, my, my thought on that was wait for Independence. They have great plans. I don't know when they're gonna do any of them, but they have great plans. I've seen, seen wonderful drawings. And, and if they ever do anything, all of their plans look like they have to have sewer. And so that connection point that causes us that one point five million is most likely gonna march up the road, on Independence aside. And every mile they come, it gets closer and closer for us.
Yeah. Good question. So if Independence is hitting that, do they have to upsize their system in order to accommodate ours? Shouldn't be coming in?
Nineteen connections isn't gonna change the size of the pipe. At a minimum, they're gonna be required to run an eight inch vein. And the eight inch vein, the capacity of an eight inch vein is, is so much larger than nineteen connections that... I don't, I don't see them needing...
In the future, if they said like, well, I'm sorry, we can't accommodate you because our system is...
Their system may not be able to handle it further downstream.
They, they could make that claim downstream, and, and, but I, I find it hard to believe that nineteen connections, that you would cut it so close that nineteen connections would make a break. It's possible that they would say, I've done analysis and engineering this. And then the systems I've designed, you knew, you've been two and three hundred homes on, still on an eight inch pipe. I mean, it takes a lot of homes for we, you need to go to the ten and twelve's. And so, I'm, I just think, we're such a small fraction, I wouldn't be surprised. But they could certainly make that claim, or it's not ours, but wouldn't be for us to decide.
Could I make a comment on the fee, possibly? Seems like when we moved from Hebrew to Daniels, under our sewer bill, Hebrew was around thirty dollars per month. And, is that, does that seem right to you? So, I mean, it does seem like a, a lot of money to have to increase payment on, but we were thirty dollars there five years ago. So, when you look at what you're kind of getting, a new system, it, what was it? Was it about forty dollars?
So sixty is what the punchline, sixty was the punchline to pay for a bond today?
Sixty's the real, the real thing.
And my recommendation is, I backed off of that and said forty. Because I think that right now it's faster inflated because everybody's busy. So I'm saying, I think we can get a better deal, I think we can save a few dollars here and there, right? I, you know, and I, I was trying not to walk out of here with a sixty, because I was afraid I might not walk out.
Yeah. But it does sound like a lot of money, but on the other hand, uh, hey, a little green restroom to put outside your house would cost you a hundred dollars a month. Next to a little green restroom.
Yeah, but you get old too, and so you don't have that money coming in like you do.
Yeah.
Thank you. You're a winner. Yeah, I mean, you're on a fixed income, that's it.
With all the laterals also?
The three twelve, the, the three twelve did not include replacing laterals. It would, it would be hooking the existing laterals back up, but it wouldn't be replacing the laterals. The, the pump system, I included the laterals because everybody would have to make a change.
Right.
So I know, for instance, we've got one lateral that was just replaced last week. So some folks, their laterals are probably due, some folks, the laterals have been replaced. So, in the, replacing the existing system, I didn't account for that. I only put it in the other one because we all had to make a change.
Right.
So tonight, as everyone's here, it's a lot of, you know, a lot of tough decisions. We've talked, thrown around, buy the bullet and get her done. We've talked about keeping doing what we're doing, and band-aiding, which seems that tonight, it, uh, when I say band-aid, it's not necessarily a negative word, but you know, there's just huge dollars, oh, we gotta just kind of keep going. My personal worry is, one day we could have a big issue that if we don't just continue to work and do sections or something. And so, um, in, in some years we can get a grant, in some years we can't get a grant and stuff. And so, I, you know, this, this forty dollar figure that Ryan's presented, uh, I know that's a lot of money, but... I, my question to all of you out here tonight is, I guess, do you understand what we're trying to deal with here and trying to present it to everybody? There's not, there's not a good answer for anybody, I don't think. Um, but we'd love to hear any of your answers either tonight, or in some emails over the next few days that, that might help us in a direction, because they, we're several, several directions to go, and we're gonna pick on one of these days.
We've already, we outlined the problems, but we need solutions. That's what we're looking for, just solutions to the problem, so...
Oh, sorry, Kim. While we're at it, we're also looking for volunteers or employees. Um, I spoke with Don, and he said, man, I've noticed how handy you are. Would you be willing to come and work eight hours a week a day? And he, he told me the way it was, he's, he's retired. But he also told me he is, he would be willing to help. You know, if he's around and something's going on, he'd be willing to help.
I'd let my track go out to the water company, or whoever needed it before, to do stuff and things like that, so...
And I think that kind of, those kind of efforts are, are gonna extend the life of this system while we're trying to get it underway. But I ju, I just wanna make that known, that we are always looking for somebody to help.
I would like to say that communication is also very key. The reason why there's a good turnout here today is from our neighborhood Facebook page, which you guys haven't quite made the jump. But the town of Daniel needs a Facebook page for its residents. Cause a lot of people are on it, and a lot of people don't write the newspaper anymore. A lot of people don't go to the website. Websites are like, not cool anymore.
Well, I know...
Isn't it true?
I know, it's not the first time, I know you've helped in multiple meetings and folks, and so I know you...
The reason why these neighbors are here is not just because of the letter you sent.
They're probably reminded, oh, that's right.
Cause we, I put notices on there about not flushing wipes, what's good and not good flushed down the system and stuff. So I just, I would hope that you guys would keep the communication open with us as neighbors, because you need these people to show up to your meetings.
The neighbors, the neighborhood community, if everybody is made aware...
Yeah.
How critical it is of what shouldn't be going down that drain system, is gonna be a huge...
Yeah. Opposed to that.
Impact, it'll be a huge plus impact.
I think you, you told me where to find it.
Find what?
What, to not flush down the toilets.
Oh, they have what they call the Ten Commandments of Sewer System. Which is interesting to read.
Not too many, just I take it.
You know, this, this really hits you guys pretty hard financially. We all understand that, fixed incomes are, are tough. Almost impossible. But, there was a, there was a party up there that wanted to list a lot, so... They got a real estate law, and then they found out that they couldn't get a lawyer, and they found out they couldn't get sewer. And I don't know where that went to, and I don't know any names. But can you see the impact that had on that particular individual? Because he, he thought he had a, a gold mine there, and then the next thing he finds out, he's, he's got a big problem. So it, it does have a big financial impact. Uh, there was a gentleman up there that just bought a house. Where he, or I understand he was in the process of buying the house. I wonder if he'd still buy that house if he knew what was going on?
If he was at this meeting?
Yeah. But the town of Daniel worked through this with nine hundred residents, they had a failing culinary system. And, you know, it, it costs people when they build a new home seventeen to twenty thousand to put in the septic tank? Just the drain field was septic tank?
Yeah, I did replace my line, just my, just my leak field cost me nine thousand five hundred dollars.
So in a round...
That's me doing, that's right.
If you can put it in your mortgage, it's okay, but coming up with money like that...
But in a roundabout way, you guys have had a real value going on. But, that's, that's...
Well, I work for the sewer district in Park City, and for five thousand gallons, it's thirty-five dollars a month. And then it's two dollars and eighteen cents a thousand gallons after that.
And they...
So what's an average home use, how much?
Well, that's, when it's new construction, we start them out at five thousand gallons. So you're looking at thirty-five dollars a month, but an average home probably be eight thousand gallons, which is forty dollars. I mean, it's a reasonable amount, and if the sewer fails, it would be really bad. And it would, I mean...
Well, you're out your house. We're all out our houses.
Exactly. And that is not even worth...
They build you overage on, on the sewer based upon the amount of culinary water that goes into your house.
But what we do, if the, in, in Park City, is we would claim the water, and then they clean it, and it goes back out in the creek. So it's a little bit different process, but the fact is, is if the sewer goes, and you lose your home, that, that is tremendous. So, looking at some of these pictures, I'm just going, wow, but...
I didn't know that you guys had problems with the septic tank when I got the home.
Mitchells didn't know either.
She's the newest. I didn't know that.
They weren't, yeah, they didn't know either.
Okay.
Well, we, we're all speculating, we're speculating the worst. I'm hoping for the best. I'm hoping that new proper maintenance and, and doing these preventative things, that we can prevent this thing from going. But we know, it's seven, I mean, it was built in the seventies. I mean, yours was built in the eighties, wasn't it?
Seventy-five.
Oh, seventy-five, so you're the same, and he's already done a leak field, we haven't.
Yeah.
So it's time to put some money back into the system.
So I agree.
And when we took the system over from Suzie, there was no money there. She's been putting everything she had back into it, but wasn't enough. The key, if you would not keep, let's put it that way.
There, there was eight thousand seven hundred dollars that she sent over. I mean, that's, that's worth mentioning. And I am surprised that she didn't keep it, because she probably didn't make any money at all for twenty-five years.
She's over...
In fact, I made a proposal to the town council that we give the money back to her. Didn't go anywhere.
We got the picture.
Suzie's doing just fine, you guys, she's retired, she's doing fine. She worked for Park City Municipal for over twenty-five years. She's been good.
Well, she, I, I have no idea how she kept up with it, to be honest with you. I, I give her kudos.
Yeah.
There's a lot of trouble with it, and we took it over, and the valve didn't work, the feeders weren't working. There was problems, but how she ever limped it along by herself, I have no idea.
Tim, a few minutes ago, you brought up something, and I've been stood on this, and I put Casey on the spot maybe here for a minute, because he knows the system really well, and he's been up there, and, you know, we talked about a lot of personnel, we talked about costs, and we talked about sorts of things, and, you know, Casey, for years, we've been talking about person. You have been doing all sorts of these things up at your work. Have you considered, or as far as town, what might be able to put together as part of departments? That might be able to help and build, and, uh, maintenance, and look at all the things we're talking about tonight? Have you thought about it, or not thought, I just, I've not, I've not put you on the spot, it's not...
It's, it's called thinking about it, you have to kind of just do it. You end up going like the Hanson's house, you just end up going over there and helping out, or going over to the house that was condemned, or shut off because of the sewage. I care about our town, and I care about my, the community, I call it our community up there. And that's why I'm here tonight and doing this. Everybody has a busy life, and doesn't, you know, they don't wanna come out and do this until it affects them. But as you can see down the road, it's gonna affect us all. And I think that, I, I personally, I like working with, with my, my neighbors. I have no problem. I don't like taking money from them, I like to help out wherever I can. Um, I think that's the way that this whole town was based off of in the, in the past, but as we're seeing, Kim, who doesn't wanna do this all the time? Don's retired, he doesn't wanna do it. You don't wanna do it. So we're gonna have to start, we're gonna have to start looking at bringing somebody in to make moving in these areas. You have to pay him a deal.
But it should be mentioned, Casey's changed, been up and changed the pump and the, by the tank. He's been involved with that, he helped me change the valve out.
In the dark?
There's services down through the Haven Estates area. So he's been very active, very...
No reason to go along, you're not seeing water.
Well, I, I mean, that's why you, but, excuse me, sort of, is I, I'm in maintenance, I handle a billion dollars with the property up there. And I see everything from the best to the worst, so this is probably on the worst side of things, but I deal with it.
I'd love you, quite honestly, if it was me asking, but if you put a little time to think about not just that system, but the things that maybe are, things that could be done for the town that you, you could see, maybe fill in some of the short-term gaps that we're having that might turn into long-term gaps or something.
I don't want to see that balloon here.
Well...
The community as a whole up there can get together and solve a lot of problems and issues that are running our, our property values down, and shouldn't be.
Or making it so that you can...
That's kind of a, I know it used to be a trailer park, but it's kind of an exclusive little area now. You don't find those kind of areas in this valley anymore. And it's just kind of getting run down, which doesn't need to be. I mean, it's, it's hurting the values of all of our houses.
So that's what a community has to pull together, if you wanna keep it nice, you gotta just work together.
So is there a law association up there?
No.
Actually, I think in the last, since we've been there eleven years, I think the place looks the best it's ever looked. Appearance-wise on the outside. Everyone's really taking care of their homes, and I think it looks amazing up there. Underground's a different story. But I think it looks phenomenal.
So I'm willing to help out, group.
How many of the eighteen do we have here tonight? How many we got? Of the homes?
Ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Seven?
I have two homes in there, one has its own septic, my home has...
Go like that.
Yes, sir. Hey.
I got a home in a cabin, right next to seven there.
Can you see, is your home on the sewer?
Yes.
Okay, I have a seat?
Yeah, but we're at the top end of it, so, um, Garcia's at the start, that's my neighbor.
Yeah.
I know they're on it, I'm on it, and then, you know, just straight down.
Yeah.
But I, not one hundred percent sure, is there a tank over there in, uh, Guston's Field in the back?
Yes.
Maybe there's a contec, uh, sorry, construction tank there? And then, it actually feeds from there down?
That, that tank that drains into the bigger tanks tend to mainly exist in. And that, that was pumped out when we replaced that in October, so it had a couple days of blockage. That wasn't on the map. So, we found that one the hard way.
The, the tanks itself, the amount is unfortunate?
I don't know. From what I can see, I mean, the concrete, I, I would say the concrete tanks were any of the least of all the, all the worries for this.
Okay.
The tanks itself, yeah, I mean, they're pretty instructive, something. Kind of a baffle collapses in...
Well, the baffle, and they can get some, there's some pretty nasty vapors that can get into the septic tanks. When it goes septic, it can cause the concrete and the, oh, the cement corrodes, and then it gets into the rebar, and once the rebar fails, it all falls apart. Generally speaking, the concrete tanks, I think, would be the least of my worries, for two reasons. One, they tend to last longer, and two, they're really not that, you know, of the three hundred thousand dollars, I think, the tanks were thirty thousand. So if the tanks are a problem, then it's not something that's in for a replacement.
Is the tank capacity sufficient to handle?
It complies with the design, you know, it, it, it was permitted, the tanks that are there are the same size as it was permitted, but... If you were to do the analysis today, no, the tanks would need to be a lot bigger.
And the, uh, on the existing cement tanks, is there, uh, possibility of putting a liner into that, or having that, uh, spray on it?
There's a, there's some spray-on products, there's some spray-on products, if you see the corrosion. So the next time they're pumped out, they can be inspected. The last time when, the last time I was there was when we pumped Guston's, the, the tank in Guston's Field, because the, we had found the, we had, we had found the four-inch line by accident with the backup, and, and kind of needed to get something fixed right away. Uh, and I did look at it, and the inside, from what I could see, just taking my head in under the flashlight, it looked like it was in pretty decent shape.
There's a state inspection that goes on that sewer system every year. It's done by an engineer. It passed this year, it passed last year.
Just, uh, without getting, any of this pass, a visual pass, is it...
What, what that inspector does, or engineer, he, he opens the lids on both the tanks, the septic tanks, to see the flow coming in, to see how the bacteria seems to be handling, and also the overflow and the amount out to the drain field.
We'll look at it.
And if there's a lot of water that's moving from the tank out to the drain field, a lot of times they'll go inspect the drain field to see if they've got water bubbling up, out, down, or something such. And that has passed the last couple of years.
And then, so I'll say, during what I believe are high-flow periods, like when the creek broke the line and we were having water flow into it, I, I've gone out and walked that leak area a couple times, looking for the same thing, and haven't found any issues. That's not to say tomorrow's a new day, but right now, I haven't found any issues, and I've tried to, I, I haven't pulled the tanks and done a full inspection. But we did have a pretty high-flow area for a year. Yeah. This year. Well, and I worked, so infiltration, when, when spring, you know, and that spring is when I've gone and looked, because infiltration's at a tide, and you can pick a time in the evenings, which conveniently is when I'm home. evenings, which conveniently is when I'm home, is when everyone else is home taking their showers, so you can kind of predict when those high areas are, and I've gone and looked right after those. And to date, I haven't seen any evidence. It's hard where it's in a irrigated field, because you find wet spots right next to all the sprinklers.
Yeah.
And you assume, you hope that that's because of the sprinkler, but in the back of my mind, I've wondered a few times if that was all the sprinkler, or mostly the sprinkler. But I haven't found any evidence of the drain field with those bubble ups and things. And I can't say I've done it annually, but I've gone out a couple times when I've had time, and very big times where I thought it would be good to check. I've looked, and I haven't seen issues. The issues we've seen are with the cambering and the jetting in the collection network. And what worries me is the same pipes in the collection network are what are used for the drain lines. And so if one's failing, I don't know what would prevent the other one from failing.
If you were to go to the problem areas and repair them, would that be, say you would go back through and replace the system, would that be a waste of money to repair them? As far as if you had to come back through a year from now, and where could you reuse that section?
So, one thing I like about that option A instead of B, is if we go to option B, we pretty much, that new pressurized system, we pretty much have to put it all in. I mean, there's a possibility of phasing it a little bit, but it's tough. If we stick with option A, I think we could do just that. If we put in a thousand, you know, five hundred feet today, then when you go back and replace the next, you know, that five hundred feet will stay. What I think we should do is, we have the separation issues and the other code issues, so I would look at kind of a master plan of how to replace it, because I don't think you're going to replace it in exactly the same French. We're going to move it over, we're going to separate things out a little better. So I would have all three thousand, or twenty, three hundred feet designed, but then we could go back in one cycle another time and do that, and then you wouldn't, you wouldn't be throwing good money after bad. We wouldn't fix it today and then go move it, you know, in five years. So you could phase in as things fail.
I'll cut off, maybe phase in before they, a little bit, if I have the time, you know.
For right now, where we're at, is, I mean, the money is not there, it's just, those two issues are going to, they seem to budge a bit.
Five, five should bite.
And then you got forty-five, or forty or forty-five dollars a month, does that, would that get us there to replace at least those two sections, or is it just getting previous, maybe a weld thing or?
When's the next one, when's the next section going to fail?
Yeah, that's a good question. You've got two sections.
We've got two problems that we don't need to be addressed immediately.
Yeah.
And to answer your question, is thirty, forty, fifty, a hundred dollars a month enough? It might be. It depends on when the next failure occurs, and when we have the next issue. If we don't have another issue for ten years, it'd be great. You know, that would be funny sufficient. If we have another major issue tomorrow, then it wouldn't be. I think at a minimum, I would say fix those two issues, and while we're there with the right trucks, camera the rest of the line, and let's see if we can get a better idea of what's coming. If, you know, if there is another area that we know is going to fail in six months, or whether we think the rest.
Really, if you have a plan, how do we drive through the tech to throw?
So, I mean, I can do a plan, but I can tell you, the plan's going to say fix the, fix the few problems we know about. If we camera the rest of it, I'll bet, just knowing what we've seen, where we've looked, I'll bet there's other issues that we have, that haven't surfaced yet. And I think you could prioritize those, and maybe do a hundred feet a year, four hundred, you know, four hundred feet a year would be better, that'd be manageable.
If we left out, we can get those problems, areas handled before, like catastrophe, if you've got it still down.
Well, so ideally, you're right, we get ahead of it. So in the next year, we get these two issues resolved, and then the next year, we take on the worst issue, you know, with the worst problem we identified, and you're not going to add the next. And so we're, we're having this conversation, and you're having to take our word for the problems, not smelling them first half, but they're there.
Well, I'd like to add, you know, we did not know you would be here, and you had your expertise in the sewer side, so I really appreciate, and I think we appreciate your comments, because you had some validity to the conversation for sure, because that's the experience.
Thank you.
I'm hoping tonight, with what everybody had heard, that I do have a resolution plan to, we have a recommendation of forty dollars, is that something that everyone feels comfortable with, that we pass out tonight, or do we still want to do some inspecting? Or, I'd like to know, because the increases are going to be coming down the road sooner or later, and, you know, forty seems reasonable to you with what you've seen, and I know there's a lot of comments that come from other folks. I'd at least start the, like, the start process, and I've heard the council, I would hope that the council be comfortable in the resolution, seeing, you know, from the forty-dollar target.
Do we still have the hardship cost that we dropped down?
I think it's always in play. I mean, I know we have fixed income folks, and, you know, but honestly, I'll tell you that for me personally, that's probably at the top of my list, because we have a lot, our community has a high, high percentage of fixed income folks, so usually eighty dollars are well-considered for the folks that are on fixed income, that just want to know.
Thank you, Goldie, you're, you're in, in the, so.
I can't hear you.
You're in the plan too, so like, you're widow, so you fall into, you know.
Just me, and I have a Walmart, so I take that into account. That's kind of like bottom feeder.
No, no, everybody, you know, like I said, there's what we call the hardship, there's people that are fixed incomes, and they just can't help it. And those are the ones that, you know, as a town, I can't see, you know, any reason why we cannot work with them. We're not in Cottonwood Heights, we're not, you know, some of these other places where they'll chase you right out of your home, we're not that way, so.
That being said, is that something the council would like to move on if regards to a resolution seeking?
I'd almost like to see it settled off for, is it folks turning to go tell the other ten votes that didn't make it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see a plan too, before we really just, I'd like to see a plan before we just start.
I think you only got one plan.
They're not.
And that should, that should do a little bit at a time, just like Ryan said.
Oh, yeah, well, let's have a plan as to what that little bit's going to be.
What the problems are.
Starting with the worst cases and fixing.
Yeah, but I don't think it should be a rate increase instantly, right? Did I?
So the only, except, I see his point, and so I guess what I did, I looked at the cost to do it all, and my only con, counter to the doing in phases, which I support, and I think it worked really well, is to get, is if we have enough issues that we can't afford it, and we have to go after a bond, at some point, you're better off to go for the bond and get it all done at once. And that's what they did with the municipal system, is we looked at a small loan here, and a small loan here, and a small loan here, and what about this, and what about this? And they finally said, okay, stop, let's, you know, this is bad, and this is bad, and that's good, and then this is bad, and this is bad, let's, the heck with it, let's just get it done. And so there's a fairly healthy loan, you know, loan payment now for the bond, but it was all at once. And so I don't disagree with you, let's go look at the rest of it and see if we can do it in phases, but if phase one is eighty percent of it, then we probably want to just get a bond for all of it and get done. That's my only thought.
Well, even if we do it in phases, we should have an overall plan, so we know what, you know, just like building a plan for a house. Even if you're doing a house in phases, you have to know what the plan is.
From the municipal side, there would always be, everything's engineered, whether it's chip seam in the road, or anything we're talking about. One problem up there, though, we don't have where all the pipes go and connections. We have a sort of idea, but we do, so, you know, we're at a disadvantage. If we had a layout of the plan and all, you know, okay, we can do the section, but, you know, but we don't. So, Kim.
What I'll do is I'll sit down with Ryan, and I'll go over what we know of the areas, and we'll break them out into zone one, or problem area one, two, three, and we'll see how much each one of those zones is going to cost. And then we can bring that back and show, I can even go around to your house and show you, this is what we've come up with as a reservation.
I can give you an example of how this works. If I get a call from one of you, and it says, I've got sewer flowing up in the middle of the road, or I've got a smell, then I'm going to go to two spots in the Haven Estates area, if that's where the call's coming from. And you're going to dig two holes in the middle of the road, and they're going to be three by ten, three by twelve each, and you're going to go down eleven to twelve feet. Then you're going to cut that pipe open, see what's clogging up, and then you're going to come across the break in the other hole. Then you're going to, after you get those cleaned up, you're going to send cameras both ways to see what kind of shape the rest of the pipe are in.
I think we understand the severity and situation.
Well, I'm not trying to overplay it, I'm just trying to explain, there's phase one.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but as I'm just saying, is I'll get with Ryan, and we'll, we'll map it out, so that we can have a visual kind of map and target these areas, so they can see which ones we're going to hit first, and then how it plays out.
And by the way, there are some sketches of that sewer system that's in the archives there, pump house. We got those from Susan.
In our pump house or in?
In the.
They've also been updated and earned the JS, along with the new information we've learned through the work that you've done, that has been updated, is reflected in the latest JS. But we do have, we don't, I'm not going to tell you we know everything, we do have a pretty good idea.
Well, with that being said, and our back in the holdoff a month, let's hope it's... Ryan, like, I mean, if you guys got some ideas.
Well, let's, let's sit down with Storm Haven and figure out some of our options.
Well, that'd be, I mean, you heard it from the town part of you, if you get together, and Casey's part of everything, I mean, I'm sure you'd like to talk about stuff outside the town, and I don't know, but that makes sense to me, so, you'd like to table for next month? Not table, but continue. I'd like to continue till next month, if you'll entertain that motion. I'll entertain the motion to continue.
Do you know that we have another meeting scheduled in planning next week? The letters that were sent out, informing them if there were meeting on Monday night, if you can't make it Monday, then it will be in the planning.
I actually got that information off the website. So, yeah.
I'll repost it.
It'll be on Facebook here shortly.
I'll repost it on there.
We had a first, we had a first and a second, I believe, on continuing this discussion. All favor?
Oh, wonderful.
I, yeah, Paul. Continue till next month. And yes, any more folks, I mean, love to hear, we all know it's coming down the pipe, so, in communication to all of us, be good.
It took one second. The bridge was, or other issues were brought up, and I didn't want to get off task, but the comment was grants about the culverts. And the town did receive almost two hundred thousand dollars in grants for those two culverts that were also put in to make the roads a lot safer. And if you'll notice, that this year, the flows were almost as high as they were in 2011, but nobody sandbagged.
I know.
So it worked.
It watered, yeah.
And so I just wanted to add that to the list of things that the town has done. I didn't want to get off track, but the town has done a lot, and using that Vanessa pole umbrella to qualify for things that we can't as individuals. And I think that's the best example, especially with the runoff we had this year. And then, you know, we have our sewer issues we went over, and then water issues, the water system is better with the grants we put in, but it's, it has, it has its issues too. So, anyway, sorry.
Nope, hey, I shouldn't have stopped to tell, I asked you if you're pissed.
I didn't want to get off task, but I wanted to mention that two hundred thousand dollars was a big deal.
Any other questions before I move on? So I would say we took care of three, Storm Haven water issues necessary, we covered that as well throughout all the discussion.
Thanks a lot, Ryan.
We had number four. Out of number five would be Daniel Municipal Water, any issues needed for Daniel Municipal? On that, I do have, I got an email, and from another company that would like to put internet on or near our water tank. And we have the one abandoned tank, I don't know, yes, we have some other areas up there. The council feel, and I don't even know who to start off with, it's strictly only an internet provider that I believe is a dish, and they would send it out. I have not really contacted them from my part, get back to them yet, but that's another internet provider that is just going to come up.
We ought to discuss that in the plan in the mail.
Because that could be a tower for other things that actually could be an intervention of town by utilizing that tower possibly, but there's worth discussing, there's worth discussion about. Okay. We passed on number, number six is, has to be removed, so we will not be discussing the hose issue. Number seven gives us licensed applicants. So turn over there. We don't have any, any new renewals this month. It's a first, ain't it? I don't know. Either they're not renewing, or else. All the businesses went out. So we don't have any, item seven. Talking about six. Yeah, the applicant has to be withdrawn on that. Eight, discuss that newly constructed road within subdivisions, public versus private. Let's have that discussion. That be on the three farms? Yeah, and several other ones we have coming. We have, yeah, we have, we approve three. We have three farms, we have one on Little Sweden, and the McCoons. We have three that we approved, for private roads. We have easement style. Back me up a little bit. Is that different than what we did a month ago, or two months ago, or six months ago, or something? Well, what we did, we ran the water line down, then we allowed, so it's a public water line. We, I think we used. We're talking about three farms on this one. Now, we're talking about three farms. We have a water line that has been ran down the, down the right away. We retain that as public water line. But there has to be, in our P U E, because it's going down our... But it doesn't have to be, they just dropped it. Okay. Right now, it isn't P U around, then, okay? Right. And so that was the question on these, are they going to remain private, or are they going to remain public? We're in there on easement. And so the one that didn't show up tonight, you're going to have the same issue, have a water line running back to a lot down easement. So, what's the position on that? I don't know what the council feels on that. I'm missing one link for mine to put this together, maybe too late. So, have we put water lines down something in the past that were, wasn't an issue as far as public or private? I mean, why is this issue coming down? Is this the first few times we've had this? Yes, yes, since we created the flag law standard, or the... The road? Yeah. That allows them to do that, the lower road standard, that allows them to build these lots in the back. We need to identify, is that a public driveway, is that a private driveway, and are we running our private, a public line through a private?
Do you think we should?
I, I think if it's a private road, it's a private water line. There's no reason, from a town standpoint, we don't want to own any of those. They cost us a lot of money. So, from a town standpoint, when I look at it, we don't want to own any of them. But for public safety on the water line, back feeding or into art, I mean, there's reasons that we do want to maintain control of the water line. Why can't that water line be part of the easement of that driveway? Because it wasn't built to that secondary standard, I don't see how we can accept that, that for driveways that aren't up to at least that new standard. They are. They're all being built to that standard. All of them. All of them.
But I think that the meter should be out on the main, already on the main road, they should take control from there.
Okay, and then what that does is makes out an individual water system, and they have to do their own testing. Then we become a wholesaler, rather than a retailer.
Why is that?
Because if you're servicing more than, more than, I don't know, I mean, lots, but Ryan had the number of, he says that makes them have their own operator, they have to do their own testing, and submit that to the state.
Why don't they just have another meter up in the front, and they just each run their own lines?
Well, they can, but we're running fire flow to the back. So you have an eight inch line running toward the back of there. We go down, what, five hundred and sixty feet?
But do you have houses on their south surface?
Yeah, there's three houses. Yeah, they're all.
Why will, I'm sorry. I didn't know we were running our fire suppression all the way back to them. I thought they were supposed to take care of.
We have an eight inch line that goes all the way back, does a ninety and goes back to the third lot.
Back to case though, but normally wouldn't they be paying from three thousand back to their lots?
They pay for it. They pay for the line. Yeah, they pay for the book, for the valves on the line. They have to pay for that, put it in. And then, but then it becomes property of the town. And that's, that's the way Ryan had that figured out. Like, because they call it a blue state. I'm like, it's a private line, a private road.
Well, you got snow powder. We're about private, publics. And if publics are going to be snow plowed, so we at least need to get our classy funds to offset the plow costs and the snow and salt costs.
Well, and, and I don't know how you're going to plow.
Because you can't turn around.
Compact it, well, ground it up asshole.
There you go. I don't know how can you pump it? I didn't know.
So do we want the water lines to be private or?
Well, the way I'd see it is if I was hooking in, I'd just run my own line to my house. So I wouldn't have to, you know, I, I've just.
Off the main.
Off the main, off the main road. Sorry, it's going to be a long run if I'm a purpose lot back.
It is.
But.
Ever without fire protection, you can't get that.
Yep.
Well, you can't. You just have to put in the proper sprinkler system.
And we're dealing with that at the moment or currently right now. So you get to put in a four thousand gallon tank and another square footage.
They have a sprinkler for X amount of minutes. They, they have a, they have a, we're pulled out. That's what I would just say. That's what we're going to have to do. Just like that.
So Eric, so on the plow, just the plowing issue, it's a private road, then have the plow. If the public road, we're going to have the plow. We're going to turn it up and heat it up big time.
We'll have to maintain it.
About to maintain it. So that looks like a huge extra cost over and above anything else. So why would that trump a private line? And I'm not, not that you would or wouldn't trump it. I see that trumping the water line issue because our road's not going to last. It's blocking. We have to maintain it.
Yeah, it's going to be costly to maintain.
The driver.
Yeah. But it's a road standard built since.
Why wouldn't we want to keep the water line?
Because you're on a private road. So that, that was the issue. That's why I bring it to the council. What do you guys want to do? Because I, I was like, oh, we don't need to mark that one. It's private. And then Dr. Ryan was like, I don't know much about it. So I could just drive back out there and wait for it to fade down. It was like, what is, what are these?
Isn't it just the easement is, is ours? We don't own the road itself.
It's on an exclusive, it's, it's ours. There are the gases there. They, they have their easement.
Is that a normal easement for a subdivision or was that done a little different than?
That's what we did as, when we created these laws.
That's what it worked out.
Yeah. So you remember they brought these, there was no easement for us. We're like, we're not doing nothing.
And you had to add it around the whole thing.
Yeah. And so we had them add that because we have to be able to get in there and service our water.
Because I didn't know that we were running that fire suppression all the way down.
Why?
I figured that they had to sprinkle their house.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a fire item back there. And probably for good reason. I mean, you need to flush a lot now. Three houses in the block. And they want to produce tag.
I was thinking that same thing. That's a law line, a dead end there.
Yeah. I mean, it is storage for the town, you know, we want to store it for the water, but.
As far as a decision on that and planning, is that something we need to really make, get that taken care of or?
Well, it's really up to the council. What do you guys want to do? Planning? I mean, we say run the line, but.
I, I think it's pretty hard to put the system in and give it to them and turn it around and tell them that they're going to operate it and test their own water. I'd say a big suit coming.
Okay, so, so then, but we could have a private road with our water system on, in our, in our P U E, in our easement?
Yeah, we could, we could. That's what we have right now on three farms. We have a private road to the public water line now, as I understand.
And that's.
That's what Ryan understands.
Okay, and that's kind of, I guess I understand. And so is the question for the council line if we want to change that?
Right. Exactly. The way you want, because we got these other ones in line and more coming. It's probably values increase and backlogs become feasible to build them.
Feasible. I mean, looking at thirty years down the line.
I mean, if there's ever a chance that that road is going to continue, we want that road to be public. We don't want an easement. We want that to be in the public. If there's ever a chance that we're going to hook onto that and that road's going to serve us someplace else in the town, then that, that would require that planning to become a public road.
Is it too late that, except they build it to the lower standard that won't really be plowed by the county very well and destroyed?
Yeah.
Is there, is there a switching mechanism to switch to asphalt to take that back?
Yeah, anytime you go more than three homes, remember that road, that road only allows for three. So if they go to four, they've got a pavement, they've got to do the other standard. That can only serve us up to three houses.
Or what happens if there's only three there and they, and some reason why they want to punch the road through?
Well, then it would be up to town to pay it if we want to punch it. But if a fourth house wanted to build down on the end, they would incur the cost of that road to bring it up to the pave standard that we have.
Well, and remember, we, we've required the base to be built. It was just the pavement we, we let, we relaxed on. So that if the town wants to pave the road, we're not going back and recreating the whole foundation. We're, we're effectively paving what's there. Uh, and the intent there was that if the town took over, we didn't want to go do the sub base and the base and all that other work. We wanted to just pave it.
So if the town takes it, how, right now, currently, how would they plow it?
Get down to the public road?
Yeah. Can, can they get their truck in and do it?
Yeah, they have little trucks that they go and do. But I'm not going, I mean, sure, it's going to tear it up. It's not.
And we don't get any road funds for it.
Well, you would if you, if they could follow the road.
So we'll get that, that X to put it.
You would. You'd get more if it was paved.
Yes.
Was it class D instead of C or B or whatever?
Yeah, C instead of B. But yeah, same, same idea.
Well, it's a liability factor between the two, if we take it in versus not.
We would have the same liability we have on all our public roads. Um, and if it's a private road, we wouldn't have that. Now, it's about a legal question, but the lawyer isn't here. So I mean, town, towns are fairly well identified. Um, so I don't know that we have a higher liability, but if we did something grossly negligent, we could certainly be liable for it.
Yeah, but the water line is what we're really talking about here.
Well, we're talking about the road.
But if we, if we keep the, the water line public, do we necessarily have to have that road public?
No, they just stay private. That's what we have right now.
And we, can we change it when they want to do that fourth or go back?
Yes.
It has to change when they do a fourth.
Yeah. Or if they go back or just fourth?
Well, if they go back, no, it has to serve.
Their road.
Okay. Yes, it went back. It's going for a purpose. Yeah.
Yeah, so. You got to fix their road too.
Yeah, we'd have to maintain it if it was so.
Yeah. If the town's pipeline has a problem and you have to, and it, say there's a major blowout and there's a sixty foot hole. Then the town's got to fix their road.
Yep.
As a liability.
It is. Now, if it was a private water line, we would. They would incur those costs.
So you'd have to fix that road. I guess it was a public stream too.
I was about to say, if it's a public road and a public water line, we still have to fix the hole.
Still have to fix the hole. We just fix the road like Hebrew. We don't have to fix a line.
So what, what's the number that you, that you have to have in order for it to become a private water company?
Um, Ryan, what is the number for private? If, if we were talking about making that a private line?
Three or more hookups?
No, I think they can have up to, I believe it's sixteen connections as a private.
Where does it start?
Where does it start? One?
One. I think you can have a private water company of one or two.
But when do you have to have a private water company?
If we cut that off at the front?
That, so it would be the six, it would be the sixteen is where it would be. They would have to have their own water operator and their own, and follow all the rules we do would be at sixteen. Below that, we could wholesale to an HOA and they wouldn't be a, they wouldn't be regulated. They'd be regulated as a community system or, or not at all if it was under five, I believe. But we would do that through a, you know, backflow preventer and a master meter. And we would sell it to that entity and charge them basically, you know, like, like the school, it's a four inch meter. So we charge them about three hundred and something dollars a month for the gallons they used and where they went. Wouldn't be our problem. They could individually meter or they could not. They could, you know.
I just don't see that going, it going to private on the water.
It wouldn't make friends with the state to have those little private communities. But from a, a way not to own the water lines and still own up to the meters with the meter back there and let the, those three homes have a homeowners association that they deal with three meters or how to split their bill.
As far as backflow on that line, that particular line, it can, I mean, I know there's can be always issue, but is that something that's maybe a little higher risk for that line, for that area as far as?
No, because they got the new cavers on the backflow preventer. So, I mean, it's no different than any other line.
They do the house. I mean, they can still block, make their own, and do the wrong thing and still screw it up.
So if we didn't run that eight inch line back there, how are they going to get water?
They could have drilled a well. I mean, but they.
I mean, what were their plans? Their plan?
Their, their plan was hooking into city water on.
They didn't know that we were going to run that eight inch line. They were planning on coming all the way up to, say, Little Sweden to pull their water from, right?
Yeah, this will go three thousand.
They may have a hard time.
No, I think that was at the onset, wasn't it? The eight inch line running down.
So I believe that the town, planning wanted to run the water line and thought that that connecting to the.